Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the meeting. This is a council workshop. No, Thursday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is three, oh, three P M. And so at this point, though, uh, if there's any citizens who desire to address the council on any matter, uh, listed on the workshop agenda, they sign up to do so uh prior to this meeting. Has anybody signed up? Okay. Um, don't say if they did, that was the, yeah, fine. Uh, we will run into the, uh, workshop discussion. Uh, we'll look at the regular meeting agenda of any items that, uh, council would like to pull. I'll open these discussions.
Mayor Proten, um, we have received a request from the applicant on item number five, um, requesting that we table the item, uh, Keith, uh, wrapping up some of the human hearings, um, items, and would like a little bit more time before the council considers the item.
Okay.
Um, and then also since Mayor Davis is in here, um, I think we would appreciate the full counsel being there. So we will be requesting that item number five be taken tonight as a request with it all over.
Okay.
And we're going to just clarify this for the next meeting, so specific to the next meeting.
For the next meeting. Okay. Any questions on that, counsel? Okay, I also had a request, uh, to get more information on the item number eight, which is the twenty twenty-three, the rule one one seven, that zero, the final reading on the, um, considering adopting an ordinance that's denoting apartment one hundred ninety-four point seven acres of property, uh, located at or near some forty-seven fifty Winland Road, uh, Temple, Texas, which is a tax abatement reinvestment zone, number forty-six, for commercial industry, industrial tax abatement, so we'll call that one.
Another option, um, which I just thought of, and if you would like me to go through the proof and pages for the reading right now.
Oh.
I, I could do that as well.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if we have time, I think that'd be good. Okay.
It's pretty short.
Okay. Okay, let's do that. Okay.
It would be in July, that's all news. Now that relationship to number eight, it is, it leads to number eight on the regular agenda.
Also on the regular meeting. While we're doing that, on item number five, the item that's been postponed to the next meeting, it's got a public hearing attached to it. So I didn't know whether, what was the plan? Did we want to go conduct the public hearing or go ahead and postpone the whole thing and let the public maybe president know at the beginning of the meeting?
My recommendation is that we postpone the, the entire, yeah, the public hearing today, six.
So you may want to now. Of the meeting.
Okay. I can do that.
So just as a refresher, um, Texas tax code, chapter three twelve, allows a city council to designate an area of the city that's what's called a tax abatement reinvestment zone. Uh, there are a couple of criteria that are required to be, uh, met in order for this, uh, type of reinvestment zone to be established, including that, um, the council believes that, uh, it would contribute to the retention or expansion of primary employment, or that it would attract major investment within that zone and be a benefit to the property and contribute to the economic development of the city. Um, what, if council can consider designating a reinvestment zone and then authorize it, so creation of the tax abatement reinvestment zone is, um, required before, um, a city council is, um, is allowed to consider authorizing a tax abatement agreement with the company. And so, um, you can do those things, um, if the following criteria, if at least two of the following criteria are met, that the project involves, uh, minimum increase in property values of three hundred percent if it's new construction, or fifty percent for the expansion of an existing facility, that the project makes a substantial contribution to redevelopment efforts or strategic economic development programs, the project has high visibility, image impact, or is of a significantly higher level of development quality, um, that the project is in an area that might not otherwise be developed, that the project could serve as a prototype or catalyst for other developments of a high standard, that the project stimulates desire concentrations of employment or commercial activity, or that the project generates greater employment than would otherwise be achieved. So again, you just need to find that at least two of the following of those criteria exist, um, to be allowed, to be authorized to enter into a tax abatement agreement. Um, city staff has received an application from H E B to evade a percentage of the increased in taxable value of certain real property located at, um, or near forty-seven fifty Winland Road, their existing distribution, um, complex, uh, campus. Um, so last meeting, um, you, uh, had the first reading of the ordinance that would create the tax abatement reinvestment zone. This item, um, H on the content agenda is the second reading of that ordinance. Um, and so that would, um, uh, that second reading would then have that zone created. And again, then that would allow you to consider a tax abatement agreement for the following project. So, um, H E B is, uh, considering the expansion of its regional distribution center, campus, and temple, um, including the frozen good warehouse, um, but also considering other future phases of expansion. They, uh, plan to invest at least two hundred million, um, in the construction and installation of improvements on their property and also create at least a hundred new full-time jobs. Um, we do, uh, believe that the project meets various, uh, of the criteria that we went over earlier that are required for, again, you, you need to meet at least two, um, we think it needs more than that. Um, and then we also believe that the project will expand the employment base, attract major investment, and contribute to economic development as was required by chapter three twelve. So that's what item, um, H does, it's the second reading of creating the geographic, um, designation, um, which is called a tax abatement reinvestment zone. And then that allows you to consider a tax abatement agreement, which is item number eight on the regular agenda tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not like, um, H E B is a good neighbor and, but expand hundred jobs. Sounds like good for the city. Any other questions, anything? Okay, let's go on to our presentation. Glad to have our Temple Library Master Plan, uh, presented, Natalie.
Hi. Thank you all for, uh, entertaining us this evening. We have, uh, the Library Master Plan to present to you all. We started work, we put out an R F P last, this full year, um, for a Library Master Plan, and, uh, Godfrey Associates Incorporated was the agency that won that R F P, uh, bid. And so, hey, we have spent about a year working together, uh, surveying the community, um, doing some, uh, focus group meetings, some stakeholder meetings. And tonight, this is the presentation, it's a culmination of all of that information put together with their recommendations on moving forward. You'll notice in this presentation, some of the data is going to refer back to some information from two thousand nineteen, um, and some of our apples to apples comparisons with other libraries of similar sizes. And that's because that was pre-COVID, and the state library requirements for two thousand twenty-two, or the statistics for two thousand twenty-two have not been released yet by the state library. They haven't even been collected yet by the state library, uh, for us to have access to. Um, so that was the last normal year that we have on record. Um, and with that, I would like to introduce Brad Waters, and he's going to be the one giving the presentation this evening on behalf of Godfrey Associates.
Let's try this. So Godfrey, we're a full-service library consultant, um, we do all types of libraries, but we're predominantly public libraries. We've done twenty-six or more in the state of Texas, including nearby Cedar Park and Round Rock. We, I think our master plan for Round Rock got them twenty million dollar bond. They used that just now to build their new library, they just opened up this year. Our team is, includes practicing librarians, consultants, and me as an architect. You should know that after COVID now, the all libraries that closed during COVID, uh, now reopen. So library outlets, service outlets in the United States now is at the highest number ever. So they're not going away, they're actually increasing in number. Uh, libraries are popular, a Gallup study right before COVID started, that people go to the library twice as often as they go to almost any other leisure activity. Um, a study by the U T Graduate School of Business, two thousand seventeen, showed that for every one dollar invested in, lot, public libraries in Texas returns to four dollars and sixty-four cents. So we all want that kind of return on our investment, but we get it. Uh, demographic, and I'm going to go fast because this is a one-hour presentation, we're going to squeeze into fifteen minutes. Population and demographic data, we used, uh, your adopted, uh, population forecast of the city, uh, I think commissioned in two thousand eighteen, uh, as our guideline for population. We also looked at U S Census Bureau Information for Demographic Data and compared you with the county, with the state, and with the country, and you're very closely aligned with this, with the country, of almost every, everything that we see. Uh, this, uh, Natalie mentioned about the peer library analysis, we looked at fourteen different communities of similar population, ranging from seventy-four thousand to a hundred and fifty. We wanted to see into the future, as you grow, how you might compare with some of those larger communities. Um, and we did use the two thousand nineteen data, uh, because there was incomplete data the next couple of years, and we don't have anything better than that. Uh, you rank better than average in terms of your total amount of space, in terms of square footage, your total expenditures per capita, your collections are a little bit larger, your staff was better, and your number of visits by the public were better. You were below average in terms of staff salary and wages. We understand you've had a, a compensation study done since these two thousand nineteen's, uh, figures. So that may have changed now. Uh, circulation per capita was a bit lower than the peers' collection turnover, the how many, how often things are checked out was lower. Uh, program attendance and public computers were lower. We did, as Valerie, as Natalie mentioned, um, looked at, uh, you know, the community from a, an input standpoint, we had a, almost a thousand responses to our online survey. Uh, we had the six community and two staff focus groups. We had nine one-on-one, uh, interviews, which some of you were able to be a part of. And one thing that we wanted to highlight here in the survey, we asked, would you be willing to raise your taxes for library service? And as is typically the case, yes is always more than no, and depends is always more than anything else. But it really depends on the details. Uh, we know that nationwide, seventy percent of library bonds pass and easily pass at a vote of about seventy percent for yes. So it's just really a matter of a public, uh, education campaign that turns those depends votes into yes votes. Um, looking at how you compare to Texas State Public Library standards, uh, of the nine quantifiable standards, uh, you were, you were missing or short of meeting the minimum in four of those. Uh, just barely missed the hours. Um, you're at fifty-seven, where sixty is the minimum. Uh, we are recommending best practice, you, you shoot to expand maybe up to four, maybe seventy-two hours at the long term. Um, in terms of staff, you are, uh, above the minimum in both the, uh, total number of staff. Actually, you're above the exemplary there, and in, in between the two, uh, guidelines in terms of, of your, your accredited professional librarians. Now, what we're doing in this case, we, as we presented this to staff, we ran across a couple of discrepancies. We've now, these numbers now compare, um, in the, to two thousand fourteen standards, which is the last time they were updated, with, uh, your two thousand twenty-one numbers, so that's where you stand. This is a much more current, uh, analysis. We also see that, uh, from a staffing standpoint, you lack an assistant director position, which we recommend. Um, you, you're, you need more multilingual professional and paraprofessional staff, and your professional development program of keeping people up to speed with what is going on in the library industry is, is a little behind, uh, normal. Um, we looked at the collections, and here, um, it's one of the ones you fell short of meeting the minimum for the circulation. Uh, you're doing okay with the collection size, and then the turnover, which is the circulation divided by collection is what the turnover number is, because you're low on circulation, you're low on turnover. From a finance standpoint, again, these numbers are based on two thousand fourteen standards. Uh, and so you, you've exceeded those standards, but we have not tried to, uh, escalate your numbers or escalate the, the standards based on the Consumer Price Index. So this is a little deceiving. Um, but it is what it is. There are no quantifiable standards for space in Texas. Uh, nationally, typically, state standards have a minimum standard of point six square feet per capita. A lot of states, including Louisiana and Delaware, recently adopted a one point O square foot per capita, and you're at eight point eight-two based on twenty-one population. Um, and this also, uh, gives you credit for space that you have not been reporting to the state library. I think you've only been taking credit for, uh, the two floors and not all of the space in the building. So this would give you credit for that. Technology, again, you're, you're behind the curve on number of, of computers per population. Um, and one of the things that you lack generally is, is better or state-of-the-market, uh, of technology applications. So we definitely want to address that in our, our recommendations. You've got great staff, uh, both from the professional and the paraprofessional levels. The programs and services that you offer are very good. The collections are, are, are good, but they could be better, and you're in the, in the process of working on that. So our recommendations basically, um, were based on our charge was to determine, you know, if you needed additional facilities or resources, and if so, how we would provide equitable access to those. Um, you know, do you need to invest in new technology? Yes, you do, uh, provide, we want to make sure you provide a level of service to everybody that meets the goal and policies of the city council, as well as the mission of the library. So the needs are preparing kids for school and college, uh, strengthen the employee base, and even maybe some small business incubation. Uh, continue to attract new residences, build and, and businesses based on quality of life that the library helps improve, and then increase income levels by doing all of those things. So in terms of access, as we talked about, we want to eventually get, you know, to and above the, the state standards. Um, that would require, well, wouldn't require, but would, in order to serve the most number of people, it would be adding outlets in West, South, and East Temple eventually over twenty-year period, uh, and then implementing access to all those facilities on a twenty-four-seven, unstaffed basis for people that will do shift work, that can't get to the library when the hours are open. Um, this has been being done now for about ten years in Glenette County, Georgia, and other places, so it's a system that works. In terms of locating facilities, um, when we typically survey clients for libraries, they say they want to get to a library within ten minutes. We did a study about fifteen years ago in Fort Worth, and there were sixteen buildings there, there was an eight-minute drive time to get to their library. Um, other places with more geographic barriers, it's longer. Uh, but what we're suggesting is that you conduct, that you use data that the library has collected and given to your G I S and do a site selection study, that would be the next step for finding where you put these branches. And when we got to town, we heard the west, oh, the worst west is growing, we need to put a library in the west part of Temple. When I look at this heat map that the G I S has put together, it looks a lot more dense on the south side, uh, than it does on the west side. So, you know, this is a visualization, but I think the next step is to actually confirm this. And so what we're saying is, you would, let me just blow this up a little bit. You see the dots, the, the different colors represent different types of library users, whether they're checking out adult books or children's books or teen books. So it'll give you a lot of information. Uh, we would suggest that you, you select locations, not based on price, usually the land acquisition cost is a two to eight percent of the total project cost. So you want to go ahead, go at this like a business, pick the right location where you can get to the most number of people, and to do a drive-time polygon around that, let's say eight to ten minutes, and see how many of these dots fall within that drive time polygon. And that's how you go about selecting the best location to cover, get the best coverage. So you might do, you do a south polygon, a west polygon, you do the, the downtown library, and maybe even something in the east, and say, okay, here's, well, how we would cover, we have locations in each of these locations, of libraries in each of the locations. Uh, from a service standpoint, again, just build on your strengths, keep doing what you're doing in terms of lifelong learning and steam, uh, early childhood education and teens and tweens, uh, workforce training, small business support, uh, I think is something that you could improve upon, maybe in terms of partnerships with local entities as well. And then you want to eliminate overdue fines. The cost to recoup that money is actually more than you get from the fines themselves, and the fines have shown to, to exclude poor people and kids from using the library. So the American Library Association has put out a, a, a statement saying that they are against the collection of overdue fines. If you still collect for lost and damaged books, there are people are still responsible for that, but fines aren't worth the money that, that it costs to collect. Collection standpoint, we'd like to reconfigure the shelves so they're lower and, uh, more accessible from a wheelchair, so you see how all these two lower shelves have a tilt to them, so they're easier to read the spine, easier for somebody in a wheelchair to, to, to get those. We want to increase or maintain a size of your collection at two, two items per capita through, uh, through eternity at least. Uh, that includes electronic as well as print-on-paper items. And then you continue what you're doing in terms of, of weeding out the older books that are either technologically no longer sound or, or too worn or tattered. In terms of technology, again, we want state-of-the-market technology, things that people are used to seeing at home and in their offices, not state-of-the-art, we don't need to go outside of that. But that includes, uh, you know, increasing your opportunities for self-service. Um, the keys to this is that helps you with automation as well, and automation makes your staff more efficient. So, um, the key to this is to upgrade your, uh, integrated library system, this is your computer system. Um, and that, uh, is something that is the core of your, your, your business. Once you do that, then you can implement R F I D, which is, if you're familiar, it's a tag toll, a toll tag for books. So now, when I take my stack of books, I set them on the deal and read them all that fast. And I'm in and out of the library. Or this, when they get checked back into an automated sorter, they go through a portal, they're checked into the system, and automated portals, automated systems sort some into the different bins, and they go right up to the shelves much faster. So the turnaround of the books gets back in the public's hands much faster. We also want to see better, uh, technology in your meeting rooms, uh, and we need more meeting rooms and study rooms of all sizes, which you have now. Um, again, mobile technologies, uh, loaning laptops, uh, tablets, uh, tablets, hotspots, or even, uh, uh, chargers you use in the library or to take home. This has been done now for over ten years, uh, with very little loss or damage. Um, the other thing it does is it allows you then to, uh, check out a laptop in the library, sit anywhere I want to use it. We use the Wi-Fi, and I don't have to have as many desktop computers, so it's a smaller footprint. I can, I can convert some of those single users to collaborative stations with very high-end software. So now I can train people on, for job skills, on some really expensive software that most people can't afford at home, and a lot of small businesses can't afford, uh, a startup. Um, facility standpoint, we're talking about a twenty-year plan where you would establish and try to achieve that one square foot per capita standard. So one would be to modernize downtown library. Uh, obviously, that building is designed in seventy-two as a bank, and has been solely turned into a library, but it's, it's, a lot of times you've moved into spaces that already existed, and so it's not as efficient use of space. So we're talking about trying to open up the, the building by taking down walls and, and visual impediments, so the staff can see things more clearly and supervise from a limited number of, of, uh, of service points. We want us to look at some new branch libraries, again, east, west, south. Um, potentially, maybe, maybe the east gets a modular, modular kiosk like you see here, so it has Wi-Fi, I can, it's got a, it's got, I swipe my library card, I see the catalog on the screen. I can check out books from here, I can return books here, I can order books here, and it'll tell me, okay, we'll deliver your book, and one day, two days, you come back and get the book. So it's a very inexpensive way to put a, a pot, you know, pilot project, uh, outlet in a smaller area. Um, we definitely recommend that you construct all new libraries as single-story buildings, because they're less expensive to operate. When you compartmentalize a library, you have to staff each compartment, so when you put space on two floors, you have to staff two floors, even if nobody's up on the second floor. So any new building, we want to see them done on single floors, and I can point to you a number of new buildings in library building in Texas, or both floors, that have cost their clients much more to operate than they would have to have if they were on a single floor. In new facilities, about twenty-year, one square foot per capita, the next steps would be the draft of building program document is basically the, uh, design specifications for any new or renovated building. So it really makes a lot of decisions with the library staff. Before you hire an architect, you hand them that building program, instead of going to one anyway, and gives them everything they need to know to design that library. Um, we talked about building the, beginning the site search. Again, we're looking for a thirty-five thousand square foot footprint, which you would grow into over time. Uh, if ideally, you build that thirty-five thousand shell to start with and finish out as much as you would afford, and gradually grow into it, the extra space in the meantime could be used by other city functions, or even leased out. Um, then considering, uh, repurposing another building for the archives collections. Uh, we've looked at a couple of those, uh, possibilities in town. Uh, in terms of the downtown library, you know, modernize, reconfigure the space, make it easier to supervise, add a main entrance off of Adam Street, it's more visible from the street, as you can see, this is where you enter into the library. Uh, open up the space, again, like I talked about. Um, we want to add a, uh, five thousand pound staff service elevator on all, all four floors, so that if I needed to bring in a stretcher in for an emergency, I could get a stretcher in and out, uh, with no problem, into an ambulance. And then we want to resolve any code issues we have. So there's a rendering we did, so this would be a, this new round entrance on, uh, Adam Street here first, there, that we're definitely saying, and, you know, Temple Public Library right out on the street. Um, we look at that, we've laid out the space, actually, we're going to go four at once and come back. We've actually laid out the shelving, so we know what the capacity of the seating and the shelving is, and that's what these blocks represent. So blue is adult, there's a glass wall that separates the blue and the red from the children, the red is the children's, green is staff workspaces, we have a library cafe at the front door, uses the outdoor seating, uh, brand-new restrooms in that new round lobby, and we extend a lobby at the top out to include that stair down to the basement garage, so we've solved the problem you have there now. And then, uh, so here you can see just how the shelving lays out, so again, from circulation desk, I could see this way, I've got a service desk here for the kids as they come through the glass partition, storytime room, learn-and-play room, uh, staff, uh, everywhere. So this would be kind of a, that storytime room in the back with a kind of a streetscape of little houses and playhouses for the kids to play and sit down and read a book. Second floor, again, wide open space, we've eliminated the existing elevator in the middle of the atrium. I mean, now the whole building is library, so the secure perimeter is at the, you know, once you come in the door, and the two elevators that existing, that are, that are existing, uh, from the original design are adequate. But here we've added this fourth, this service elevator, so it always backs into a staff workspace. Um, top floor, we've reinstituted the racetrack corridor, so the two fire stairs are connected now with no dead ends. Um, we've put the friends here adjacent to the meeting room for their book sale purposes. We've actually expanded the meeting room, and we would put in, um, modular dividing walls to be able to separate that, complete separate spaces, so you wouldn't have to just have the one big room that you do now. But that top floor now becomes genealogy, local history, and pretty much staff, uh, support services, and, uh, staff administration. So from a staffing standpoint, uh, you just would need to add a very few, uh, positions at the top of the org chart, assistant library director and branch managers, as those buildings come online. You definitely need to retain the people you have, um, and, and hire some additional paraprofessionals that, that then the library, the professional librarians can delegate to, and make their, uh, kind of spread that, that span of control. Uh, and certainly retrain and re, and hire any new multi-personal staff you need to for, uh, your current and future population. Um, from a finance standpoint, again, we want to, uh, make sure that we meet or exceed the state standards, as we might escalate those into the future. Um, look at additional sustainable revenue streams. Besides just local, uh, local support, you had a very high percentage of local support higher than all, all the other, um, other peers, so you definitely wanted to look at some ways to do more private fundraising, we'll get to that here in a second. Um, we've set a goal for about thirty-two, thirty-three dollars per capita over the, over the next ten years, getting up to that point. Um, and that should be enough to staff at least one and maybe two new branches. Again, one recommendation we have is that the library foundation become active, that they actually hire staff to do, uh, the development work. So they have full-time staff, at least one or one and a half persons to go out and are constantly trying to raise money so that you can get that private money number up to maybe ten percent of your total, uh, operation cost. Um, and again, looking at other ways, all sorts of, uh, out-of-the-box ways of, of, uh, revenue generation, such as crowdsourcing and grants and things like that. And then we, we definitely recommend, uh, that you deal with four different school districts that you coordinate in kind of future bond elections, so that you're not all going out and asking for money at the same time. Certainly, you'll, you'll partner with those schools, and that should be, uh, a part of that. So from a marketing standpoint, continue to do the excellent job your marketing people are doing. Um, we were saying that, you know, that requires that the library keep, uh, a finger on the pulse of the, of their population, of their resident, users, um, on an annual basis, and there's actually a platform that, from the Public Library Association, P L A, uh, that they could use, uh, that helps them determine what the outcomes that they're achieving with their, their services. So with that, I will ask, answer any questions you have. If any.
Any question?
Any questions? Being said, three satellites, one single-story libraries.
Over time, yes. So if you set the 1.0 square foot per capita, as you grow, that, that gives you the target for when you would add another library. Um, right now you've got 72, 74,000 square feet across the street, which is the best way, right? Uh, so and you're at what, you're almost, you're almost getting close to 100,000, I think it's 86 or something now. Um, so that would be, you know, to stay ahead of the curve, try to get to the 1.0 and then stay ahead of it as you grow.
And then before that, you would recommend doing the, kind of like a little library kiosk sort of thing, is that?
That's a, if you want immediate, uh, immediate response, that's a 300, an exterior one like that's a $300,000 investment. Can be picked up and moved when you want.
Normally a two-day turnaround time.
It could be faster, it just depends on, it depends on how, how big you get. Um, you can get a bigger, either it's modules, you can add modules. So again, it can give you more books and that's a faster turnaround times. But it does take, you know, going to their staff going and picking out.
Susan, you have any thoughts?
Um, would you go back two slides to the, um, the budget issue, question, or points?
You'll see in the report, we've actually mapped out the 10-year budget.
Okay. Probably am wrong about the number. There, there was a number that you, there, this one, increase our budget to 30, what are we now per capita?
Um, I can give you the 2021, was that?
Twenty-something, twenty-two.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, 2024.
So versus 32, 74.
You probably, I'd say more like 33 would.
Would.
Round it up to.
Okay, so from 30, from 24 to 33.
In years.
Give or take.
Yeah.
Oh, this is in 10 years to go to that, okay.
You'll see a chart in your master plan in the, in the recommendation section to show you how to get there.
Okay, good.
And I apologize, I didn't explain with what I hinted out, this is the actual plan at Chalk Communities, uh, this is the appendix that has, um, all the different charts and graphs.
Any other questions?
No.
Would you, if later night you think of something, write it down at least, or, yes, sir.
Quick questions, one of your first slides showing data, per capita data, and you mentioned where we sit, uh, in terms of, as compared to the average, where, is right after you showed the peer cities. And I was curious whether the, whether that, those statistics were compared to the peer cities or just overall for the state of Texas.
Um.
Or, or nationally.
Yeah, the, so.
Early on, it's probably around 10.
Good. So if it's in here, then this is with the state stance.
Earlier than that.
So, um, then it would be here, these are against the peers, this is 2019 data.
Yeah, so it's the benchmark and so it's compared to the other cities, the list of other cities that you showed, not just.
And again, there's a detail, let's see in the, in the, in this version, the detail of that, all the statistics. Um, it's pages and pages of data.
You mentioned, um, beefing up the library foundation to be more fun with. Um, what my, my inclination is that the different entities around in Temple that are fundraising are circular. Like same, go to the same organizations and get, every organization is hit up continually. How, and you, you made the relationship to our peer cities. Do those cities have foundations and how are those foundations reaching beyond the cities to raise money beyond the same givers continuously?
That's a, it's a great question. Um, I don't know, I, I don't know that we looked specifically at which of those cities have foundations, but I'll get that information for you. Um, I can tell you that again, the foundations that are most successful hire staff. They use volunteers as the board to direct the staff and hold the staff accountable. But the foundations that just use volunteer labor burn out and then they, they fizzle out. Um, again, the peer information you'll see when it goes, look at local versus state and private fundraising. They're all in the 10 to 15% range where you're at like one or two percent. Friends are doing a great job for what they do, their books are great.
Sure, sure, they're not fundraising.
You're right. They're not, they're not.
They're not, yeah, totally different way. But how, how do you suggest that friends go beyond Temple? Do other entities get money from elsewhere?
Foundation.
I'm coming with the foundation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's it, you just look, I mean, they're, they're, they're nationwide or even international, uh, grants. So if you hire a person who is in development, that's their, their calling, uh, they'll, they'll know exactly where, where to go. I would, you know, if you've got them a clean room, I'd be my, I'd rather Waco and say, where's Mr.? Uh, I don't know who or, I've not met him or anything else, but I, you know.
Well, he's hit up by every, every organization in Temple continuously.
I'm sure, but you already have. I see his name on the screen.
And he's very, very generous, um, to the community at large.
Well, you know, we can, we can touch on all the things the library does. I'm sure he'd be even more generous.
And I, I will mention, um, as a staff, we've put together a list of foundations that provide, um, uh, funds to 501(c)(3) as nonprofits. Uh, we just can't get it because we're not a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, um, but with the activation of the foundation. So they would be an agency that could reach out to those organizations that provide funds within either the state or a region that we're part of.
And we have a consultant who is specifically geared towards fundraising, if you didn't want to move forward with that, could help you out with that.
Very good, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
Thank you.
Just real thought, I don't think I had a chance to say thank you to Natalie. Uh, the winter brunch was a lot of fun, definitely enjoyed it. I took my son, a 24-year-old son with me, and he was very impressed that you use technology. We all had to download an app and we played a game and it was, it was a lot of fun. So thank you for doing that, I think it was a good turnout. And I hope the food was delicious, I, I know I left.
Thank you, absolutely, I appreciate it.
Great job, thank you. Okay, we're going to hear from Liz.
All right, so we're back with the boards and commissions annual report. This will be the second report for this cycle. As you know, two years ago, y'all passed a new boards and commissions policy and as part of that policy, you see these presentations once a year. So within this presentation, I'm going to give you some details about what's expected of your board report, which is sitting in front of you. Also some, uh, stats from the last year of these boards and commissions and also report highlights. Now, your boards and commissions policy said that annually, the city council must receive a report of each board that details the activities for the past 12 years, their response to the goals and their future goals, as well as an attendance. It just so happens, um, earlier this, oh, sorry, the annual report shall contain, and you'll see it for every single board that's in here, a cover letter signed by their board chair, um, a summary of the activities that they did the last 12 months, a response to any of their goals or work plans that they set last year, as well as additional recommendations for future goals and also that summary. Um, it just so happens earlier this year, I was scanning all of the library board minutes and around 1936, 1937, when, uh, the city of Temple actually took over the library board. Um, you can see here that annual reports are nothing new to the city. Um, there is the, um, attendance roster from 1937 library board. Here is the annual report that the, um, library president gave, as well as this little snippet that I found in the minutes, um, reminding the city commission that they had some vacancies on the library board, that they needed to appoint new members. So I just thought that was a neat little thing I stumbled across since we're given this report and the library board is in here. So again, um, your board reports come twice a year and they're based on when the board members are appointed in both April and October. So for our April appointees inside your, um, binder here will be the following eight boards. Just a few little statistics I think is interesting. Again, just for the eight boards that are reporting this cycle, there were 70 board members, 100 board meetings were held, and the most meetings by one board was 54. That's the Main Street Advisory Board, that includes their four subcommittees as well. Nonetheless, that's a lot of meetings and a lot of volunteer hours and staff hours that go into, um, these boards and commissions. So getting into the meat of each board, again, your booklet is going to have more in-depth information. This is just the highlights from each board. The building standards commission met four times, they heard 17 cases. 10 orders to demo were handed out by the board and seven orders to secure. Um, the board's goal is to look at placing liens for demo using city funds. And if you'll remember, last year they looked into this using CDBG fund. The development standards advisory board only meets as needed, it just so happens they did not meet at all last year. However, their future goals when they meet again is to elect a chair, approve this annual report, and also approve a proposed plan of work and hold quarterly meetings. The historic preservation board has been very active, they were one of the longer reports you'll find in your book. Um, they received and discussed preservation information, created and improved a new heritage marker application and design. Also, uh, approved the new local historic landmark designation application marker design and recommended to council a new historic district, the African-American Churches Historic District. Um, they are currently working on a plethora of activities, which includes, um, promoting new historic sites. They already have three benchmarked, uh, 508 South MLK Drive, the Bird Creek Indian Battle Site, and the MKT Depose, um, Texas Historic Landmark Designation. They also want to distribute more education materials, um, by holding public information meetings where they will get the word out about best practices, uh, code compliance, um, permitting and standards of historic houses and homes and sites. Um, they're also looking at amending chapter 17, which is very important as they are continuing in their process of becoming a certified local government designation through the Texas Historical Commission. And finally, they're also working, um, in reviewing historic preservation as part of the Unified Development Code as that is in the process of being reworked. Moving on to the library, they approved, if you'll remember, last year they were reviewing just a ton of different policies from the bulletin board policy to the meeting room policy, checkout policy. So they have approved all of those new policies. Um, they're reviewing current marketing and outreach and of course took part in the library master plan discussion, which you saw just earlier today. And in the future, they want to continue to expand on their marketing, uh, review customer service feedback and then also really dive into that library master plan. The Main Street Advisory Board, again, they were chosen, uh, they were last year and again, this year is an accredited program of Main Street America. As part of their accreditation, they have to follow this national, uh, Main Street Program trademarked four-point approach, which is where they get their subcommittees, uh, promotion, design, economic vitality, and organization. The board that you will see in here has developed a very comprehensive, uh, set of goals. I think there's 41 set of goals. And then in the new year, they're looking at developing more forward-looking goals and a work plan. So for this section of the report, I just broke it down into the four subcommittees. The economic development or the economic vitality committee really brainstorms all the vacant buildings downtown, uh, and trying to get businesses into those. Um, they really focus on recruitment, retention, expansion. And these businesses listed here are either new or expanded businesses within the last year to downtown Temple, which is the Chalk Community, Lena Lane Boutique, Wick and Burn, uh, Chippacoburra Gem and Hat Trick Sports Bar and Soccer Training Center. The design committee is looking at construction projects in downtown Temple. Um, they received reports from both transformed temple and neighborhood services. And also they really focus on the beautification, the cleanliness, the safety and construction of the downtown properties. The promotion, uh, committee really acts as a catalyst to help promote the different, uh, events that are happening downtown. Um, First Fridays is one of their big things that where all the businesses get together, but this committee really helps to promote those as well as all the various downtown promotional events that happen. And then the organization committee sponsors a historic building photo contest, um, every year during National Preservation Month. I believe that's going on right now. So if anybody has any photos of historic downtown, get with Dan and get those submitted. Um, they also hosted their third annual Imagine the Possibilities Tour. I think they had 26 different sites this year that the public could go and tour and look at, both, um, existing businesses, place for future businesses. And they also host a business after-hours reception. The Neighborhood Revitalization Advisory Board really focused on their goal of love where you live. They, um, provided feedback for the, um, new planning districts as well as reviewed and provided feedback on the homelessness and mental health strategies plan. Um, provided input on the neighborhood leadership academy and the home maintenance academy. And they'll continue to support, um, these areas with kickoff events with public forums and, um, canvassing. The Parks and Recreation Board also had a lot of internal reports for the various, um, events Parks and Rec puts on, like the Christmas parade and the little bit of blooming, which this year is turning back into the big blooming. Um, and then they also recommended to council, uh, various rates. Uh, also on the Beyond the Bin Master Plan, they heard staff biographies and division updates. One of the goals of this board is to look into perhaps creating a subcommittee that could help with their capital improvement projects. Uh, our last board is the zoning board of adjustment. Again, they only meet as needed, they met twice during the reporting year and they granted three variance requests. And that is all I have until the next cycle, which will be in September for those appointments October 1st. I encourage you to read the full report. The board put in a lot of effort to creating a lot of these and creating their own goals that they can work towards. And lastly, I just want to publicly thank the board liaisons and the board staff, um, and department heads who facilitate these boards. Y'all have any questions?
No questions.
I have a comment, I just want to be sure that Jason knows about historic preservation pictures.
He does, yes.
He's a great photographer.
In fact, uh, just coincidentally, my update ties in very nicely with, with Liz's update. There's picture Jason in there.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Liz, thank you, Liz. Uh, I'm just amazed when I look at pictures of how many people in our community are involved and make it our city what it is. So we really want to say thank you to the staff and all the volunteers that are part of Dr. Temple 100th Place with the ranking.
I just want to add to that, when Grant came up with a lot of these ideas, some of us on council lunged and grunted and said, oh, you've got to be kidding. It's never going to work, we'll never get that many people. You were so right, we were so wrong. And it's so good to have so many residents so interested.
And things happening.
Yes.
It's not just talk.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm sure it makes everybody feel good that we could see some of the work and it's not inviting anybody to the house.
Okay, we have now the, uh, presentation from the DSA Sports LLC regarding the sports facility audit and destination marketing strategy.
You know, uh, this is going to be helpful, it's fabulous today. We have John here, you can see him in the video up there, um, he's with DSA Sports. Um, for the past several months, I've been working closely with the Parks and Recreation Department as well as Communications and Marketing on, on this sports facilities audit as well as the destination marketing strategy. So, um, John is from out of state, so I'm glad that he was able to, um, come today. He, he actually, um, presented to the Parks Board, I think last week? And then we had a, a long workshop afterward, um, from staff to, to work on things. So he's going to present to you today, um, all of the recommendations that he's come up with in the hope to increase sports tourism in Temple.
Well, thank you, Erin, I appreciate it and I presume folks can hear me, is that correct? You can hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, good, I just wanted to check, uh, it's pretty warm here in Cincinnati, but not as warm as, uh, what I enjoyed in Temple a few days ago. Uh, folks, I've spent the last 42 years in sports tourism. I've run facilities, bid on the. I've run facilities, bid on events, produced events, uh, created a sports commission, led the National Association for twenty-five years, and I've consulted with now hundreds of cities and counties. And, uh, it's been a delight and it's fun because every time I go into a new community, I meet more interesting people, fun people, people that are dedicated to doing the best they can in their community. Uh, let's take a look very briefly at what we were up to the last few months. Next slide. We conducted a sports facilities audit where we examined all the tournament quality facilities in the city and we also got over into felt in a bit. Uh, we also created a destination marketing strategy and as Erin mentioned, we had a workshop a few days ago designed to get that process started. And we also looked at some of the competitive marketing policies and practices of communities like Round Rock, Bryan College Station, Waco, and a number of other communities in your, uh, immediate area. Next slide. We were sure we were going to be taking very close look at the first phase of Crossroads. And let me say right now, Crossroads, the way it stands right now, if there were more fields, the, it is exactly what tournament directors are looking for. Those of you that were involved with it, kudos to everybody. It's a beautifully designed park and obviously you have thoughts about improving and expanding it over the coming years. We considered the master plan that's been produced. We looked at other tournament quality venues within your community and visited those sites. We interviewed a whole bunch of key stakeholders from the Parks and Recreation Department, Marketing and Communications, other people within city government, and of course, a plethora of people involved with the local sports organizations. Next slide. If you're going to be successful in sports tourism, a community needs the suitable facilities. There, and one of the reasons people are interested in this is the growth in sport tourism. It's been recently estimated that in the United States, sport tourism is now producing just over forty billion dollars a year in direct visitor spending. And it's proven to be both recession and pandemic resistant. Very quickly, in two thousand nineteen, the industry set its high watermark. In two thousand twenty, of course, there was a major dip. But what's interesting is in two thousand twenty-one, ninety percent of the loss was recovered. Ninety percent of the loss was recovered. That's how quickly the sports segment bounces back, uh, when it has the opportunity to do so. There's been a tremendous growth in new facilities across the country. You're not alone in building fields. It's happening everywhere. You need accommodations, the right kind of hotels, and you do. You need some things in the area for people to see and do, and you have that. And you've got some dedicated local event producers, the soccer, baseball, softball, and the other organizations that know what to do, where to go, and where to get teams. Next slide. You're already hosting sports events that bring visitors to town. One of the things you will hear me say twice is this, one of the big secrets is you're already doing events, so let's get more of those teams from far enough away that they can't get home tonight and they'll sleep in your hotels. There's an issue at Crossroads. You need to know about it. Practices and games are wearing those fields. We recommend that you no longer allow practice to take place at Crossroads. Have all your practices for baseball, softball, soccer, and other sports in other locations in the city. There'll be some pushback on that, but it's important that you do that to preserve, preserve those wonderful fields and especially let the soccer fields continue to establish themselves. Everybody wants to be at the new facility, obviously. Temple grades out well as a host city. And some of your older fields and diamonds like, uh, Corum Pie or Mercer, uh, those are still usable facilities, but they could use some upgrades. And that's something Park is well aware of. Next slide. Uh, in the destination marketing strategy, and we're not going to go through this, uh, we've got three phases. Uh, and the first phase is crawl. The second phase is still crawl, and the third phase is begin to walk a little bit. Uh, we have a, a voluminous report that addresses all these issues, and I don't think I need to go through, through them all today. Your existing marketing materials based on the existing Discover Temple templates work fine, and all they need is some sports customization. And I want to assure all of you, we've already done a work session where we've talked about mission and vision and goal setting and plans to meet each one of those goals and way to track progress every year. It's all been done. Next slide. Focus on events taking place. Don't commit to local events until outside events are set. What that means is that if you get an opportunity to bring a, an event in that will have a significant number of visitors, those events are going to be scheduled more than a year out. There are, work is in progress with marketing and communications and Parks and Recreation to work out a system where the out-of-town events can be booked far enough in advance that they won't interfere with local events. And there'll be more to come on that in the coming months. But we want to emphasize visiting teams and focusing on statewide events. Younger age groups have more people traveling with them than older age groups. The sweetest spot in all of sport are twelve-year-old girls. First of all, people want to travel more with girls than boys. And secondly, more people travel with them and more family and friends come along. And don't forget the other segments of the travel industry while you're building up your sports tourism business because sports travelers spend less on average than regular tourists because they're trying to conserve resources to make multiple trips in a year. Next slide. Manage expectations. Go slowly. Be very deliberate. The competition you're facing in your immediate area has been at it for a long time. You can't overcome a slow start in any other way than gradually. So manage expectations. You're looking at two or three years down the road for significant events, but be assured that the planning that resulted in Crossroads resulted in exactly what tournament operators are looking for. Turfing some or all of each one of those fields at Crossroads is an intermediate step before the master plan might be executed. Because if you did say turf the infield, which is very common these days for softball and baseball, you could practice there and would not have to restrict those fields to competition only. Uh, we provide the math in the report that shows how a fifty-team softball event with about forty teams from out of town and ten staying at home each night could spend as much as five hundred thousand dollars over a three-day weekend uh, in lodging, food, beverage, and souvenirs and so forth. So four or five of those, and you're quickly in the two to three million dollars in estimated direct visitor spending, all of which gets taxed. And when you do expand Crossroads, you'll do it based on all the things you've learned over the last two, three, four years. That's it. That's a real quick run-through, and I know you don't have time for very many questions and discussion, but I'll sure answer anything that might come up.
Any questions?
Yeah, Don, you said a hotel. Um, with that, is there any specific size that you recommend?
Uh, no, it's what the hotelier thinks is appropriate. Uh, it's, it's really important to, you know, it might be eighty-five to a hundred rooms depending. But there isn't a magic number for a hotel, a new hotel. It's what the hotelier thinks. You've got a good collection of hotels right now.
Did you have a specific site or generalized site in mind for a hotel?
No, not specifically, but it sure would be nice to see some, uh, commercial activity in the area of Crossroads. Uh, there is land out there, obviously, and someday somebody's going to build restaurants and hotels out there. Uh, that would be ideal, but, uh, in the meantime, as close to the major thoroughfares as possible.
Now, that is all with our existing field, or is that, um?
I'm sorry?
Well, I guess, do you think that we would be able to, uh, in two to three years, the revenue you said, I think it's, did you say five hundred thousand per?
Yes, with existing fields, what you've got now. You can do that with what you've got.
Okay.
Good question for Kevin. What does it cost to turf a field? Do you have a ballpark?
Uh, I, I don't remember the, uh, cause I want to say back when we built Crossroads, it was maybe close to a million a field, I believe. Uh, but if you, like what, uh, what he was mentioning, if you do just the infield, uh, typically where you have the dirt, that's what causes your rain delays or rain outs, uh, which would bring down the cost. If you, the more you do of that, you also can start eliminating like the mowing, those types of, uh,
Saving operational costs.
And then the other advantage you have, you know, water is a, a scarce commodity someday, so the more you turf, then the less water you use. Uh, now turf is not going to last forever. It's maybe eight to ten years or so, something like that, and then you'd have to replace it again, but we would have to run the numbers, uh, again.
One of the things that Kevin and I have had the chance to talk about some of these things, obviously, and one of the things you you begin to realize, if you, if you would turf, for example, most of the soccer fields at once, they wouldn't all cost a million dollars. Uh, there are, there is a tremendous savings in multiple fields at one time on the same location.
And Don, we have that tennis, um, that, the tennis facilities out there. Does tennis bring in any money?
Tennis can, but I think, um, to be fair about it, you have a recreational tennis facility. And to turn that into a tournament facility requires it being the home base for all the players within, I don't know, close to fifty miles. And there are some tennis clubs in the immediate area and that already exist. Because you need at least three to four times as many courts and you need a stadium court, clubhouse. Uh, it's a, there's a lot to it.
Don, what about pickleball? I mean, I realize it's not in the category of the things you're talking about, but we do see it growing in some ways.
Oh, pickleball is huge, huge. Here in Cincinnati, we're building thirty pickleball courts down by the Ohio River in the flood plain, so that when the river comes up every year, it won't hurt it. But that's just one example. My goodness, there, there is a National Pickleball Association now and a sanctioning body with the appropriate rules and regulations. It's the biggest, fastest-growing sport in the United States.
So it's, so it, it, it could be bringing in money also.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
My understanding was to add from pickleball court thought to the, you know, that tennis facility. And one of the, um, Kevin's priority is, I think, places and spaces, the IP that will bring forward the first round of projects that will bring forward for not consideration soon.
Hey.
Next meeting.
I have to admit, uh, Don, that I never heard of pickleball till about six months ago. I mean, I must live on another planet. But I went to my gym on a Saturday afternoon. It's usually rather quiet. I couldn't park. There were pickleball competitions.
Uh, I am presently doing a little bit of work with folks in Columbus, Georgia, and they will shortly have thirty-five pickleball courts.
Well, we're behind it.
Don't fret about being behind. Be deliberate about getting more involved with sport tourism. Uh, don't rush. Take it easy. The business is going to be around for the foreseeable future, and there's no sense in rushing, rushing and making mistakes. Anybody can buy events. You want to build events.
Great report. Thank you, Don. It's really.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention.
Right. I will move on to, um, we see the department will update some information.
All right, first. Uh, so first I did cover org charts. There haven't been many changes. I have filled some spots, but, um, the org itself is still the same. And my publishments for Q, three, and four, um, we have added some more. And it, it sounds like, and Dana for, for all you sounds like that I'm behind, and I am because this is Q, three, and four. So some of these things that, uh, you may say, "Well, we've already done that." Yes, because it's been in three and four. Um, my next one will be, uh, hot up, so it'll be present. Um, so, prime gap, we added some boards and commissions. Uh, my government online, we changed, um, meter costs and worked on improving work clothes. Day Forest, we did a major upgrade, uh, major release. Same thing with Navoline and Red Track. Uh, we installed cameras at Hillcrest, um, our instruction projects, which I'm sure you all are very familiar with. And then some of those latest projects, uh, we managed the right Verizon bill for the city. Cell phones devices get swapped around quite a bit, so everyone's probably trying to do reconciliations, and this quarter we reconcile with Parks and Floodways. Um, we're working on upgrading the police department from iPhones to Androids to prepare for our new records management software. So we've just deployed our first few phones. It didn't only work on Android.
Another reason I can't be a police officer.
Finalized negotiations on our niche contract. Um, and we completed our cyber security training and reported back to the state. That was the, uh, training that y'all got to listen to a few months ago. Um, and completed our organization changes in addition.
Kelly, wait, 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 wait. Would you remind us, what, what is niche?
That is the Police Records Management.
Oh, right.
That's the, um, the regional, so we're replacing our, uh, old software that is really in for won't be supported much longer and is really not very efficient at all. And we were able to develop through, um, a lot of hard work, uh, from, from Chief Reynolds and his, and I think Alan actually led the, the project, um, to develop the consortium with pretty much every law enforcement agency in Bell County and some, I think, I think Cooper's Co. too. And so we will be the host, um, that, uh, that system, but all of the law enforcement agencies will be on the same platform, which should, um, be really fantastic in terms of efficiency and sharing information and emergency response. And, um, I honestly, you know, you said I was crazy earlier about the fourth emission. I did not see, did not think I would see that actually come to fruition. And so that, that's a huge deal. But now Kelly and her team have a full play to get it implemented. So.
We'll, we'll have every law enforcement agency in the county shortly have grid launches.
It's so important with emergency. I mean, we never, obviously, remember nine eleven and the towers and the fire radios.
And also crime analysis, you know, so you, I think that, that is probably even the more significant um, element that, um, you know, you, each agency will be able to seamlessly share information, which I think that will help solve much faster than it, than the current very siloed, um, software.
And when will it be launched?
Uh, we're looking at twenty-four. March.
March of twenty-four.
And we've already been working on it for good fifteen months.
Yeah. What is interesting about the system we select? What is interesting about the system we selected is that the state attorney general's office is actually looking to. Uh, possibly buy a niche system as well and start doing almost like a consortium like we did. But do it with all the smaller agencies around the state of Texas, um, to give them the technology that we're gonna enjoy. But one of the other aspects of that is, is that they call, they have a program within niche called InterNiche. Where we can do MOUs, and basically we could tap into that, those others and see what's happening all around the state. So if we have a, a someone here in Temple that we're dealing with that may live. In Amarillo, we may be able to draw data from that to help us work our cases. So. Uh, that's on the very front end, but I know the attorney general's looking at it.
A lot of possibility. Uh, new applications that we implemented, fifteen-five for weekly reports and Vex for Janet, a post agendas. Uh, Swift Comply, it's a two-part um, implementation. It's FOG and then Backflow, we finished the FOG piece. Uh, we renewed our Microsoft licenses and we moved some security software to PMA. Uh, GIS has been updating the Lumen Fest maps and did some uh, data updates to Chameleon, which is our animal software. Uh, I think my last presentation, I showed you the Hillcrest map and the Crossroads map before it was actually live. Um, they're both live now. Um, and then new maps we created and printed mapbooks for um. Um, Kenton's team, and it was just before the storm, so it was perfect timing, just in time. And then the library heat map, but.
How are the crossroads? Kevin, are you still getting people complaining to tennis courts?
Uh, we, no, not from reservations. We get uh, conflict between uh, tennis and pickleball players. Uh, so, but that's why I moved that the pickleball uh, item, but in terms of the reservation, no.
Not an issue anymore.
Not that I'm aware of.
And unless you wanna play tennis and a pickleball player has the court reserved, then it's a problem.
Okay, projects that we'll be working on uh, in two quarters, uh, some conference room reservation. Um, processes, we're working with each department right now to implement that. Find time, which is just an add-on to Outlook that will help us find open. Available time for multiple groups internal and external, federal meetings. Uh, and employee directory, ran through the power up um, for our all-world cell phones. It has all the contact information. Decisions, which is some agenda management software that right now is specific to um, committing different aspects of the way. Um, and then Central Square Learning, um, we have Central Square as our financial software. Uh, this learning module has training for um, their product as well as certain ways to use them. That's anyone. And then RouteWare, uh, our portion of this is just on the G I, GIS side to add a recycling garbage route um, with optimized um, routes for efficiency. So our part will be done, but I don't know that Justin will be ready to implement it, so. We shall think, just because our part is then, we'll, we'll be live with that. Monopool, and so that's for asset sharing, best of fleet software. We moved our IDR, our interactive voice response system to the cloud. Uh, we're working on online payments um, for most of hotels, our occupancy taxes, so the people can pay online. And the second part of Swift Comply and then some software upgrades. Uh, we plan to install some more cameras, um, the Wildcat Parks Admin and finish a C and G station in Lions Junction. Uh, building access control badge access to human resources. Uh, the DICE configuration, which y'all are very familiar with, getting rid of our two monitors. Um, then uh, we'll be working with Janet and team to um, come up with a solution for electronic signup for speaking at councils. And then staff changes for in our organization, sorry. Uh, and then for GIS, uh, we had talked in my last presentation about a water outage map. Um. As y'all know, we have new management in GIS, um, that wants to take that in a little bit different direction. I, I think we may be a little bit. More user friendly, so we're, we're revisiting that before we put anything out there to the public. Um, mowing detail dashboard, um, we've been working on this for a little bit. It's, it's taken us a while to collect all the data and make sure that we have it correct. Um, but we hope to have that available in Q one or two. And then uh, revaluation map for Tracy, kinda had the same, same thing, new manager, new ideas, new ways of doing things, so just relooking at it. And then we're working on our addressing and street naming standards, and we're gonna add flood ping data to my government only. Then ongoing projects are niche or record management. Uh, construction, I'm not sure everybody is very well aware of, our continued replacement of uh, computers on our cycles. And some work on the airport inspections and CityWorks and then fishing campaigns. All of those. Um, as build cleanups for GIS, um. Um, data or um, quality reviews for the data that we're um, putting into GIS from CityWorks. Um, obviously a new collection and cleanup of GIS data ongoing. And transferring that data from Esri to um, H5 or our Central Square software. And then mapbooks, we've committed to giving those to Kevin's team each quarter. And then our KPIs, which look pretty boring. Um, and like you see the ninety-nine point two one, it looks horrible, doesn't it? But it's ninety-nine point two one. That's not, that's not bad. Um, there's Q four. And then I just wanna touch real quick about, uh, we've been working with performance excellence to update our KPIs and what we report to y'all, so. We're still gonna do some availability stuff, but we're gonna move towards reporting on some um. Um, protection um, percentages with the software that we've implemented. Uh, the number of users and devices that we're supporting and the software.
Good question. Goodness. How many staff do we have?
I have twenty-four.
You have a lot of work. Thank you. I don't know enough to ask a question. You know, this happens every time Kelly gives a report. It's the only person we don't ask questions.
Then you can ask whatever question.
That's the bottom line. And Brian, if we give her a, or something?
Yes, ma'am.
A question for Kelly while they're pulling that up. On the cameras that monitor the different, uh, like the. The Wildcat, have y'all seen any improvement in their presence, having as far as crime reduction or vandalism or?
No, but we've identified locations where they added to help with that. Parks is a big, a big area.
Okay.
Has the Wildcat been vandalized?
No, not that I'm aware of. Kevin had the belt in the Temple football game yet though.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. And so our update for planning and development is we're gonna cover. Uh, the fourth quarter of twenty-two, so July uh, through September, and then the last three months of the calendar year. And so just looking at uh, our major accomplishments within the last six months. The Bell County MOU for plating, which you all saw several months ago. Uh, which seems to be working really well and uh, we, we don't get too many questions from applicants, but. Having that um, partnership uh, to review just subdivision plats that really uh, only directly impact our city. Uh, and having Bell County uh, review the others. The Unified Development Code Update Kickoff, which uh, was about six weeks ago and. Uh, so you'll also see in our upcoming next ninety days, uh, we have uh, public input meetings with a consultant. Uh, White and Smith LLC, the head of Kansas City, and then of course, half associates, which y'all are familiar with that did our comprehensive plan. Uh, also Jason Deckman, our senior transportation planner, who's been working very closely with communications and marketing. Uh, to develop mobility minutes, which are on YouTube. I think we're working on getting those on our website. But they're two-minute videos with a particular transportation topic. Most recently, it was pedestrian bridges uh, focusing on, the first one was the Thirty-first Street pedestrian bridge. Uh, near the animal shelter. Uh, also tech stop coordination to remove driveway, and so I'm gonna show you slides for the rest of these. And so here's, here's Jason, not gonna hear him, that's just a screenshot, but uh, that is the Thirty-first Street Bridge. And uh, in looking at uh, reporting back to the citizens in terms of grant funding on these projects. So um, I, I think that's been successful. And also, Councilmember Walker, you're clear with this driveway, and so we wanted to highlight. This uh, because it's coordinating with Tech dot, so this was uh, Councilmember Walker uh. Had a complaint or concern, citizen who uh, was looking at this Cadence Bank location, Loop Three Sixty-three. Near um, that is Kirkendall Trail right there. And uh, the point is, so she contacted us, Jason, who we call the Tech Stop Whisperer. Uh, and this is just another example of that, just working with Tech dot who is already. Implementing this change, uh, which will really increase safety for people coming off of the loop. And either coming to the bank, I mean primarily it's coming to the bank, uh, so that they're closing that entrance. Forcing people to get onto Kirkendall Trail and just a much, much safer access point.
So this one, the lower one will be closed. Is that what you're saying?
No, no. The lower one, uh, I'm sure there are people that attempted to try to get across there, but I, hopefully not many.
No, it's usually if people.
It's the, where the access.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, right, right.
Turn, quick ending thing. But they're too lame on the access road that um, people just fly through and then you've got people that are coming off the loop. And two cars coming at you, so it. If, if you take your life in your hands every time you do that, so this'll be nice. It'll be pared down to one lane instead of two.
Good. Very good.
Also, another transportation-related item, uh. Jason and, and I were able to go to the American Planning Association State Conference in El Paso in October. Uh, and he gave a, a great presentation along with Jory Delly, the main consultant, who was with Alliance Transportation at the time. During that eighteen-month project, uh, but a, a good overview and, and workshop in which uh. Yeah, it was a fairly full house, good combination of engineers and planners and decision-makers and, and really an engaging conversation. And really, the, the highlight was that uh, this was not something we were planning on doing, but they contacted us. Three weeks before the, the actual conference and Jason was able to fill in and. And work with the consultant, get up that all together. So even though we weren't planning on that, it was great PR and uh, and I think went really well. Uh, new art trains within the last six months, uh, this one at Fox Dog on North Seventh Street, just south. Uh, the North Central Historic District, kind of have the Temple Wildflower theme on that train. Precious Memories and uh, that in their downtown location. And that train uh, has different graphics that symbolize all the different businesses that have been in that building over the last hundred years.
Jason, I'm, I mean, Brian, sorry, I should know this. Who, who is responsible for painting the different ones?
Right, so uh, the, right now, the city, we have uh, sixteen different art trains um. That, well, actually it's twelve. We're, we're gonna ask for four more um, budget cycle. But so twelve of, we're providing the, the trains that, that we have.
Okay.
And they, they are responsible, these businesses, they apply, they go, goes through a committee process. Uh, they hire or work with an artist uh, to do that. They, they funded them through all for the actual painting.
Is on the committee that decides?
Uh, the city staff, various departments and, you know, including.
Great decisions.
Public Works, uh, Housing Community Development, Maine, led by Main Street.
Good.
Uh, so Dan Keller, so, but yeah.
They're all so interesting and so diverse.
And there's, we've got that on uh, our downtown website now. We got the URL there, which uh. And uh, should have put a map on there, but either way, um, it has all uh. Let's see, eight art trains now, has all of those. So looking at our SIS grants. And this was actually an administrative grant uh, issued by Bren for Hat Trick Sports Bar, and of course, this is. What the former L and M Electronics building there on North Main Street. Uh, which didn't really add a whole lot of value to that section of downtown before. Uh, but now the sports bar that uh, Liz mentioned um, in her PowerPoint. Uh, that, yes, that is part of the Main Street, is part of SIS, you know, this has been, so far, it's been there for about a month. Uh, it seems to have good activity and certainly um, generating a, a, a lot more activity in that part of northern downtown.
We definitely enjoyed ourselves. It, it was really nice. There was very, very full. Uh, it was more kids than I expected. It's less of a bar and more of a, a soccer.
Right.
Practice area and um, it was interesting to see all the dads there. I'm sure they're like, yeah, I'll take them to the birthday.
Which call a win-win.
Yeah, exactly.
It's called hat trivia.
Yes, I mean hat, hat trick in uh, soccer and in hockey. It's both sports. A hat trick is the same person scoring three goals in a, in a single game.
The only one that owns it is also on the Coyote team, I think.
He's the, he's the general manager.
Okay.
Yes.
So he's very involved in both.
Good.
Manuel Valasquez, who uh, I think lives in Clean, but he was introduced to downtown Temple. Because he's the general manager for our semi-pro soccer team that plays at Woodson Field.
Sure.
About six games during the summer every year and, and uh, was interested in having a indoor training facility, but also a bar. And he's got a food truck, Colombian food truck, so just kind of bringing all of his interests into the single, single business.
Well, now he needs to move to Temple.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, also that was mentioned in Liz's report for the preservation board, the Bird Creek, you know, battle. Uh, marker relocation and battlefield preservation, which I say major accomplishments in the last one eighty. Well, it's, this is an ongoing process, but began within the last several months. And this is the Willow Glen subdivision uh, along Nugent. Uh, WBW is the developer, the builder is primarily Dr. Horton. Uh, this area here is actually the, the significant uh, part of the battle. The eighteen thirty-nine Texas Rangers versus primarily Comanches, but also some Waco and Kickapoo Indians. Uh, and so there's a battle there that uh, Pittsburgh Creek named after uh. Captain Byrd who uh, who, who died in this conflict. And so it was about thirty, thirty Texas Rangers to, depending on the account. Uh, two hundred to two hundred and fifty um, Indians. And so very significant to Temple's history, to the Texas Ranger history. Comanche, local Comanche tribe, so working with the developer and the builder to take the city track A. Uh, do some battlefield preservation that includes a trail, uh, some interpretive signage. But really, the first, what spurred this on is the relocation of the nineteen thirty-six Centennial. Uh, granite marker or monument that is in a um, in, in a utility. Um, a, a P U E, public utility easement, just down the street on Nugent that is overgrown. I'm sure y'all have seen that, that photo before. So relocating it to here, but also expanding the scope to include battlefield preservation. Um, which, you know, great private-public partnership, uh, Chuck and Kevin, uh, their staff and, and are. Uh, gonna work on relocating the marker. So it's really been an exciting project because of the collaboration and the excitement about it. Also happens to be the two-hundredth uh, anniversary of the, the beginning. Of the Texas Rangers. And so the Texas Ranger Museum is also involved, so uh, future destination. So future destination.
Won a battle.
The Texans drove them, the Texas Rangers drove them off. So, you know, it depends on how you look at it. It was like five Texas Rangers died and it was thirty something Comanches and Kickapoo and Waco. But yeah, so just early Texas Ranger history here in Bell County. Also, the local historic landmark design. Once again, a great collaboration with with communications and marketing. Kelly, who's doing a great job with the historic preservation board, worked with them and came up with this design. Of course, that has been approved and future heritage marker, well, the land, future designated landmarks will have this. And so of course, the heritage marker will, will still continue for what used to be the landmark design, which you see on current buildings. Okay, looking at the next ninety. So I'm just going to talk briefly about the first six, and then I got some slides for the others. City initiated rezoning south of the BNSF Railroad. Restarting that process, we've had some valuable public input from the various businesses already. When we were looking at that process and ultimately realized we need to have more conversations with them before we were ready to really proceed. And, and so that essentially would expand the central area to the south with, with some conditions most likely that would allow the existing businesses that be nonconforming, most of them industrial, to continue with that issue. Also, the Ferguson Park Neighborhood Planning District Overlay, working with Covey and Pillar, their architects, and so that process led by Aaron. Initiating the historic resource survey process, this would go through the historic preservation board and really be initiated by Kelly Atkinson, our senior neighborhood planner. Expansion of the Development Review Committee Process. This is something that has come out of our, our first red tape production team meeting, recognizing that there's a need for all zoning cases to go at least their staff to be able to identify if there are any infrastructure challenges. You know, utilities, having the fire marshal take a look at a potential development to say, okay, you realize it's a two inch water line, which will not support, you know, without replacing the water line to be at least a six inch minimum. So just looking at those kinds of questions. So it's no additional work on the applicant's end. It's more of a, hey, we've identified this issue at the zoning stage rather than waiting until plating or permit. And then sharing that feedback earlier rather than later. The UDC update mentioned that hiring a chief building official. So we have three really good candidates that we're interviewing on Friday, March twenty fourth. And also Monday, the twenty seventh and a variety of, of different stakeholders. Many Taba representatives are helping with that process. So we're excited about getting that person hired and on board, hopefully. And then also talked about the red tape production team process. We have our second meeting tomorrow. We're going to come up zoning. Fun stuff. And, and then also just within our department. We have, we've done an award, we've given the first red tape production team award to Tinesia Weidermeyer, who's our, our planning technician. She has, she actually has for the second time because she's, she's been doing great things, just improving the process. Including she's taken the initiative to for us to go paperless, completely paperless, not creating folders that are going to, you know, sit in more file cabinets. And so that's been, that's been a bigger challenge than you might think. Some, some of us are, you know, still committed to paper and in some kind of, you know, security blanket way.
Appreciate y'all being proactive with that. I mean, I love the name of it.
Yes. And yeah, and Bren's leading us on that. And it's, it's actually been fun to be able to brainstorm and look at ways to, to save everybody time. And, and it, it doesn't necessarily mean eliminating all steps. It just might mean put, you know, putting some of the steps in a different place to make sure that that our applicants are getting the information they need when they need it. Also, May is National Preservation Month. So we got a lot going on and there's, there's Jason. I promised another, another photo of Jason and some of his photography. So this, the community treasures program that's part of Preservation Month. Main Street has sponsored this and I think this, this will be the fourth year. And they've had really good cementals for the photos as, as they had in the previous three years. Jason had placed in, I think, two of those years. And I assume he'll submit if he hasn't already this time around. And so those, those winners end up getting displayed at different museums and businesses around town for several months.
His silo photograph is wonderful.
Oh, did you be?
Where's Aaron? Is Aaron still here?
No.
Oh, when, when we do the Silo District, we should look at that photograph maybe for the cover.
All right, I'll talk to her.
It's a good one.
Yeah, I'll talk to her about that. This year, they've also expanded it to include paintings or actually I guess it was last year, so second year. And some really good cementals as well, so that, that's exciting. And then also Imagine the Possibilities Tour, and that is going to be May twenty fourth, which is a Wednesday this year. Liz had mentioned that last year there were twenty six different locations that were featured. And you see here, here's the map. Not sure how many we'll have this year, but this will be the third year. And, and it's the first to represent an expansion from the previous year. So also this, I believe this was the SPJS team professional building and just a setup of what that looks like, you know, it's a before renovation or rehab to have renderings and just, and developers to be able to answer questions. To be able to also market available commercial and residential spaces. And then also on the historic preservation board side, Kelly Atkinson has already hosted her most recently in March ninth preservation workshop, some of you may have been able to go. She's having another one in April, but also one for Preservation Month. And that is going to be Friday, excuse me, Thursday, May twenty fifth. And also in the next ninety, I'm working with Dan. We are going to start on the first Friday in April. We're going to set up a very informal meet and greet with downtown business owners. So he and I are just going to walk around downtown and set up and say, hey, we're going to be in these different sections, which Dan has put together a map for us. Just letting him know, hey, we're going to come and we're going to visit your business and just very informal. We'd like to talk to you, see how you're doing, see what, what kind of feedback, what, what can we do for you? So once again, very informal. So something that I did when I was at the city of Alamo Heights, working with much smaller city. The city manager, we did this and it paid huge dividends in terms of just, you know, building that trust with downtown and really just having just great conversations with them in terms of what, how they're doing and what they need. Also, in the next ninety, yes.
That's great. Building that relationship is really.
Sure. So we'll just, we're planning on doing on Friday mornings and having a couple hours. We may adjust depending on, hey, if it's a restaurant, they may not be around or open at nine o'clock. So just, you know, blocking off that period of time. Next ninety, the, the full application for the second phase of the Georgetown Railroad Trail. And that's from thirty first Street to the MKT Trust Bridge. That's a historic structure, National Register of Historic Places, and that of course is at the Leon River. That's what it looks like. So that's part of the scope that will apply for again, but feel pretty good about this time for the statewide tech stop funding.
It was a good article in the paper.
Oh, yes. Yes, very well done. And then also just kind of a kudos to Public Works. I don't see any Public Works folks here, but pass on the kudos. So while this isn't a officially a phase of the Georgetown Railroad Trail project, this is a really significant. I believe this is from today, perhaps Trust Bridge is part of their drainage project over the Friars Creek Trail at South Temple Park. And I believe that was Richard, you know, Richard Wilson's idea to, as they replace the drainage structure, which is absolutely needed to, to work on getting a pedestrian bridge as well, which will also remove some of the, the funding need for phase one. So that funding can be expanded for the Georgetown Railroad Trail project.
This matches the bridge across Friars Creek at Pat Patterson's place.
What, it's very, oh, yes.
It basically matches.
I haven't, I've just seen that on driving by, but I was going to say thirty first Street Bridge is very similar, but that one is.
The one, yeah.
That one you're talking about, maybe it is.
It may be.
And just here's, here's the Friars Creek Trail. And you can see that, you know, they've got the pile arms and they're, that is well under construction.
Now, where is that again?
This is at the, this is at Friars Creek.
Right.
So at the Georgetown Railroad.
Okay, okay, right. Yeah.
KPI, just focusing on permits right now. You can see in terms of just combined overall building permits, trades permits, you, you name it. In orange is the most recent six months and then in blue, the previous year, that same six month period. And you can see overall, that's a twenty two percent increase. Now, looking at January, still a, I believe that's a twenty one percent increase from this year versus last year. So once again, overall permits, now it's a different story when you look specifically at single family residential building permits for a variety of factors. But as, as you know, interest rates have been on the rise and they're finally starting to level off. Clearly, that's impacted the number of single family residential permits. But so the dark gray at the bottom is the last six months. And so you can see that it's been lower than the, the previous years, especially, well, you know, latter months of twenty one were record months. And then overall, last year was a, was a record year as well. So lagging behind, once again, overall permits are up. So we're seeing more renovations where we might have seen a new home constructed. People are investing in their current homes. And so that's, that's a good sign overall. Looking at inspection numbers, very similar to, to what we're looking at with permits. As you can imagine, a, a permit in almost all cases generates an inspection. And so comparing this year or the, or the, these past six months to the previous years, six month period, that's represents a twenty five percent increase over the same period last year. And then just looking at inspections in January, comparable January of this year versus last year. And once again, last year was a record year. And so seeing that, that, that similar trend of what was it? Twenty nine fewer permits, you know, out of almost three thousand. That's pretty much on par for last year. All right, that's all I've got and happy to answer any questions we have in mind.
Any questions? A lot of activity.
Thank you.
Anything else we can discuss on our agenda? If not, it is four forty seven and we're done the workshop of the city council. It's going to be in the meeting of the city council and the county.